To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's the first meeting in the new year, Wednesday, January 3rd, 2018, 10:00 a.m., for the Curry County Commissioners General Meeting. To my far left is Administrator Hitt, Commissioner Gold, myself, Commissioner Huxley, Commissioner Boyce, County Council Huddle, and the Administrative Clerk, John Jesuit. Before we get into adoption of any amendments, we're going to, the first meeting in the new year, is the appointment of a Chair and Vice Chair for this calendar year, effectively, for 2018. It is a requirement per statute, I think in the routing slip, County Council referenced the general statute, then it goes into the governing body when you read it, the requirement, what happens if a majority of two in a general law county can't agree, and so forth, so... And we have music. Not bad, it was not bad, Tim, some of them today are. So I think with that said, unless County Council, you have any additional comment to make on that requirement, I will open, again, before we get into any further adoption of amendments, I'll open this to a motion from your Commissioner to appoint a new, or a Board Chair.
Mr. Chair, welcome back, Commissioner Gold. I would like to nominate Commissioner Gold to serve as our next Chair Person.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second with the condition that I can uphold my promise to the public for brevity.
It'd be a long time since I sat that close to a schoolteacher. It'd do us good. And you'll be between Commissioner Huxley and I. That's even better, isn't it?
No, I don't think we really change positions. I've never seen him change positions in the past, but...
I always am.
Yeah. We need to vote on that?
So, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further comments on that discussion? If not, then we'll call for that question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we have a new Chair, and at that point, I will turn it over to Chair Gold to proceed to accept a motion for a Vice Chair, and then we'll go into Item 3 for adoption of amendments to the current agenda.
Okey-dokey. Do we have any nominations for Vice Chair?
Madam Chair, I'm going to nominate Commissioner Huxley for Vice Chair for the next year.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Okay. Call for the question?
Aye.
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 Okay. Moving on.
Congratulations.
Or condolences, we don't know. Okay, moving on, we've got adoption of amendment for the agenda, and let me just make a suggestion before we get going here. We've got the consent calendar, and I would suggest if anything needs to be coming out of the consent calendar, let's just leave it kind of in the same place, but I'll circle it noting that that comes out, and we'll have a motion to take care of that as we go through. That understood?
Yes.
Like, if you wanted to take out D, I'll circle that, and we'll just take it out rather than move it all over the place. Yes.
If I may, Madam Chair, just a note, and I think you have this, but just to make sure, Consent, Item 5A, was removed from Consent-
Right.
-and placed separately under Administrative Actions Appointment.
Right, and that was the only thing that I could see that needed to be changed. Do any of you have any other amendments? Commissioner Boyce?
None here, Madam Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Huxley?
I do. On...Item 5E, Order Terminating Workout of Class Pay, I would like to just make a few comments on that, and that, because of that request, that that be moved out.
Okay. So what we're gonna do is, I'll just take that out, and then when we get to that, we'll do it separately, probably before public comments.
And then, one other one on 5F, on approval of the revised budget calendar, I would also ask that that be pulled out, because I would like to request a minor change to that calendar-
Okay.
...before we approve it. And, one last... No, it will be for announcements, and I can address that during announcements.
Okay, so, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended with E and F on 5 being taken out?
Madam, we're not bypassing the agenda amendments, is that correct, though?
Agenda? No, we're not bypassing that, but what we're doing is, we're taking those two items out without really putting them someplace. I'll just put them in order. Why, did you have something else?
No, I understand it. That's good, thank you.
Okay.
Then are you asking, is there a motion to approve-
Is there a motion to approve it as amended?
Correct.
So moved.
Okay.
I would second that.
Any discussion? Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, moving on, it looks like you've got the public comments-
Yes, let me separate this group is not on the agenda, okay?
Okay. And let me just say something before we get into public comments. We're gonna keep it to three minutes. As I said earlier, I believe in brevity, and please be brief in your comments as well as polite. Those are the only two requests that I ask, so...
And this is for an Item 5F, which is on the agenda.
Okay.
This is for 7B, which is on the agenda.
Okay.
And these, in the order that they were received or submitted-
For 11B?
Are for 11B-
Okay.
-which is on the agenda.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Chair-
And that's all of those.
Yes.
We still haven't done the agenda amendments, though, have we?
I thought we did.
We just approved the agenda amendments as amended, the amendments as amended.
But I thought we were just voting on the consent calendar. I have one thing to-
Oh, you had something else?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go back. What did you have?
Wild Horse Fire Brigade, I want to remove that from the table and see if we can vote on that today.
Okay, where would you like that?
Towards, maybe, 11C.
11C, okay.
Where is that?
It was tabled the last-
Okay, so it's not on the agenda.
That's correct.
You're asking to remove something from the table that is not on this agenda.
Well, what we're doing is, we're putting something back on that was removed.
That's correct.
Yep, it's a motion to add an item to the agenda as an amendment.
Okay, so do we have a second to that? I'll second it, just to take care of the item. Okay, so, any discussion on that? Okay, I'll call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, moving on to public comments. Ron Crook, if you could step up to the microphone so we can hear you, that would be great.
Well, good morning. I'm here, I have the Fair Board Chair, David Haney, and the new Fair Manager, Nikki Sparks, and we're here to publicly make this award to them. Each fair in the state, excuse me, under the Western Fairs Association members can give a Blue Ribbon Award, and the Blue Ribbon Award is for outstanding recognition, appreciation, dedicated support. It could be from an individual, a organization, a group, but in this case, we're presenting the 2017 Blue Ribbon Award from the Curry County Fair to the city of Gold Beach for the assistance that they've given us with dedication of a transit room tax for helping on repair and maintenance. So I have Becky Campbell here, and Doug Bran from the city, and I'd like to present this to them.
Thank you.
This has been one thing that we badly needed, the county being unable to provide funds for maintenance, repair and maintenance, and the city has helped us, so it's something that we really are appreciative of, and after 41 years of being Fair Manager, this is one of my last honors of presenting an award, and I really, this is really something I've wanted in all those 41 years, some dedicated money for repair and maintenance of facilities, so...
That's great.
Thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, David Honi?
I was part of that.
You were part of that, great. Nikki Sparks was also part of that, and Scott Foss?
This just came in.
Come on up.
That's also 11C.
Hello, my name is Scott Foss, and I'm with 143 Productions, and...
It's pretty loud here, real quick.
Lift that mic up, Scott. On the left, on the left. There you go.
I'm here, real quick, to mainly introduce myself and my company. The last 15 years, I've been doing music promotions all over the western states. I started back in 2001 in a large event on my private property at RV Park on the Klamath River, and over a 15-year period, I worked with the Delnor County Supervisors, Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, Highway Patrol, Road Department, so I'm pretty familiar with it. What I'm here today is to hopefully just get myself introduced to you, real quick, and get myself on the next agenda, so I brought some information for each of you.
Thank you.
When I come back, it'll be a different binder, and this'll fit right in that binder, because I plan on coming back quite a bit.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
After all these years, you filled my name correctly.
Was John Ward in here?
So if you need to get on the agenda, you'll need to talk to John Hitt, so...
We'll get you on.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So again, that's my main focus, real quick, is just introduce myself. Right now, 143 Productions is, I am representing my company, but we're also representing a group called the Wild Rivers Entertainment Group. We will be hopefully formed in either an LLC or a corporation within 30 days. I'm here for a fourth year projection. I want to do a large event gathering in Curry County. Not like Cape Blanco where it was a large mass event, big difference. In Curry, in Delnor County, I was the one that instigated the large event permit process for Delnor County. They didn't have one. We started with anybody over 400 people in a gathering needed a permit. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. So I want to just say that, real quick. When I come back, I don't want to go against what you have as a mass gathering, but when I have a lot less people, I want to go to a large gathering permit, and I hopefully work through you, through with you on that. If you have any other questions, I definitely want to meet with you individually before the next meeting, but that's pretty much what I'm here to say today.
Yes, Commissioner Boyce?
Good to have you back in Curry County. Also, Mr. Foss has quite a high school football coaching background and good record, so, again, welcome. Welcome back, Scott.
Appreciate it, Coach.
Well, thank you for coming, and I'm sure we'll be looking forward to hearing from you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Individually as well as on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, moving on. Consent, the other public comments are gonna go where they were before. So, we had a couple of items taken out of the consent calendar, so we're going to go to those. 5E, first of all, Order Terminating Working Out of Class Pay for John Huddle. I think you had some comments?
Yes, my comment, it was explained, the out-of-pay situation that affected Council Huddle was explained in the explanation point on the agenda routing slip. What wasn't explained, and I think, and I address this certainly to Administrator Hitt primarily, was that this had been, this pay had been set, as it was addressed in the agenda routing slip, for a specific time period. That came as a request, I think, from my memory, of my, from me, to request that a time limit be set, because we had had a prior, prior to your coming here, we'd had a prior issue with two individuals that had, again, been out of class, and it had been lost in the mirage, or whatever, and nothing ever came of it until it was later addressed and questioned what had occurred. My point is, the county clearly didn't learn anything from the first mistake, and they need to. So there needs to be something in place, in effect, so that once that occurs and dates are set, they don't just continue for perpetuity. It should not have occurred. This has nothing to do with what was being done or wasn't done by Council Huddle. That's not the issue here. The issue is the procedure. The county didn't learn a thing. Okay, those are my comments for that.
Okay, so, you would suggest in the future that we have a calendar set up, or whatever?
I would suggest that Administrator Hitt take care of it, so it does not ever occur again, because it shouldn't have occurred this time.
Couldn't agree more.
So I approve, you know, or I would motion to approve that. As it was presented, we'd moved it out as a separate item, so I motion on that to approve that item.
Do we have a second for that approval? If not, I will second that. Any discussion? Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on, we're gonna look at 5F, Approval of Revised Budget Calendar. There were some-
I think there was also a public comment on that, and I have talked to that individual, you know, separately on this issue. I would like to, I don't know, I don't see the finance, the new finance directors here, but that's not super important. Again, I will address it to Administrator Hitt. The calendar, there were a few minor corrections that were made. I would like to ask that the meetings not begin on May 15th, beginning on Tuesday, and going through Friday, but to begin on Monday, May 14th, and go through, because I certainly, four days, didn't even come close to getting through the budgets last year, and I would hope, because we'll have a week's preview this time of the budget, like, as we didn't have last year, but at least it would give us an extra day to discuss as a committee that, yeah, that issue.
So are you making a motion to-
I'm making a motion that we add Monday, May 14th, to that calendar for Budget Committee, formal Budget Committee meetings.
Do we have a second?
Good catch. I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know if the individual that had submitted the public speaker slip wants to speak or not, but I know one person did.
Mr. King, did you want to speak to that issue?
If that addresses my concern, I have a wedding, my child at Friday, and it's a day drive away, and I'd hate to miss two days of budget hearings.
We want to talk about that one?
We won't get much done with you gone.
Okay, moving on, we've got the consent calendar that needs to be, we need a motion to approve that, with the exception of E and F. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
I would second the motion.
Any discussion? Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on, presentations, Curry Watershed Presentation, Kelly Timack, Coordinator?
Yeah, it's actually Kelly Timchak, I'm the Lower Rogue Watershed Coordinator, and Matt Swanson, he's the South Coast Watershed Coordinator.
Okay, I apologize for mispronouncing.
You're okay. It's a weird name.
Not really.
Yeah. Oh yeah, I gotta go get this going.
Well, it's, you know, when you read-
Oh, yeah, I can go over there, too?
You don't have to. You can work from there.
Oh, really, to click in?
If you can get it to work.
Well, we think we've improved.
Oh, have you?
We think. This'll be the test.
Okay. So, we partner with the county on some projects that we do, and we're also designated by the counties, the Watershed Council. So we come each year to present and talk about what we do in the county. So, one of the first things is, the Lower Rogue Watershed Council does is, we partner closely with the Forest Service and the Trash Dogs, several other community partners and businesses in town to do the Rogue River cleanup, and so we usually remove 15 to 20 cubic yards of trash from the river every year. We go from, generally like Foster Bar all the way down to the mouth of the river, and the Forest Service does the upper half. We usually do a big noxious weed removal on the Mill Bar in town, and high school students participate. We got 4th through 6th graders, lots of other little kids that come and help to pick up trash. We use jet boat volunteers, so people that just drive their own jet boats and have kids out, and then we throw a big barbecue lunch for everybody to celebrate and to say thank you. We have educational things up at the Quisatena Campground, we have that. The Forest Service this year brought native plants and getting people to know all their native trees and plants. Trash Dogs are always helpful cleaning up the roads along the way as well. In the Rogue this year, we did some baseline monitoring on macroinvertebrates in Saunders Creek, so that's one of the creeks that flows right into the estuary down in the Rogue River, and macroinvertebrates are the little bugs that live in the rocks in the creek, and so they feed the fish and several other, kind of a base of the food chain, if you will. And so what we found is actually, Saunders Creek was quite helpful in setting some of this information, that it was pretty good for fine sediments and pretty good for temperature. It's obviously, as you would think, this area down here is a little bit higher stress down on the lower end. Am I shooting somebody in the face? No, anyway. This guy right here, it's a little bit higher stress because it is mostly by people, so those have a little higher temperatures. It's also at the bottom of the creek, so it gets a little bit warmer than it does up at the top of the creek. But fairly healthy, healthy creek, healthy for bugs, with a wide diverse group of bugs. So we'll go and figure out some more stuff there later, that's just some baseline information. We also did a shellfish assessment in the Rogue River estuary, because you may not know, but the Department of Environmental Quality has tried to put sort of a rule down to say that we're not meeting standards in the Rogue River estuary, because it set our bacteria levels lower, because they call it estuary "shellfish-growing waters," which, if you've been to the Rogue, it's not really shellfish-growing waters, it's not similar to the coues or anything like that. But we did invite ODFW down to come and assess it, and they did find that there were no living mussels, really, and goose neck barnacles, it's fairly dead zone for those kind of things in the boat basin and also in the estuary proper. There was no native eel grass that we found. They did find a lot of this emergent freshwater grass that was really great for ducks and wildlife. They felt like it was high nutrition value, and that there were lots of Asian clams, unfortunately. And, I'll pass this off to Matt.
So the South Coast Watershed Council and the Curry Soil and Water Conservation District did a large restoration project out of Cape Blanco on the sixes side, a couple years back, mostly to develop off-channel, kind of overwinter rearing habitat, primarily for coho, and so, which one?
Just click your right.
So we've been doing a little bit of monitoring, running a smolt trap, and we found a good diversity and also good numbers of species out there. We're primarily looking for coho that go in there and overwinter, and then leave in the spring as smolts, but we're also finding a lot of large-scale suckers that go in there and do the same thing as juveniles, and then kind of a wide diversity of other, kind of non-game species, so that's good.
Oh, and then another project we did, this is something new to the Lower Rogue Watershed Council, is we've kind of moved into uplands as well, and so up on Kimball Hill, we had a project doing oak restoration. There's some amazing old oaks up there, there's several oaks that are like 400 years old. There is white oak up there, which is pretty impressive. This is a very limited type of habitat that we have over here on the west coast, and so we're trying to maintain those, the large meadows, and then the oak habitats that are here, because they are so special and unique. So we've done a lot of cutting and burning here. This is sort of a historic photo. This is from the 40s, and this is just from the 60s, so even in the 20 years, you can see, you know, how much this little leg is filled in, and all up through here, so. Really interesting project, there's a lot of neat endemic plants up there that are very special and unique to that area.
So, up in the north end of the county is the town of Langloes, and they draw their water from Floris Creek. They can have a subsurface intake down near the highway, and so for the last couple years, we've tapped into a partnership of a number of different agencies and nonprofit funders that want to improve water quality coming into municipal water sources. So we've been doing projects like riparian restoration to improve filtration of runoff, and also increase shade, and then we're doing some bioengineered bank stabilization work to try to shore up stream bank erosion in some of the agricultural lands, all with the idea of improving the water quality that's coming into the intake, and then also to improve fish habitat. A big objective or focus for both the South Coast Council, the Lower Rogue, and the Soil and Water Conservation District is to promote this idea of working lands, which is basically this recognition that a lot of the landscape can support sort of ecological values, like clean water and fish and wildlife habitat, but also support the production or the management of natural resources, like timber, agricultural products, that sort of thing. And so, one of the things we come in and do is, we try to help landowners with access, and a big issue is stream crossings, and so over the years, we've tried to find cost-effective ways to install bridges or larger culverts to provide fish passage, but also ensure that folks can get around and manage the land. In this case, this is up in the sixes, and this bridge was installed so he can run cattle around the ranch, kind of rotates cattle through a rotational grazing. Another example is developing off-stream water systems, so in order to fence the streams, in a lot of cases, we have to provide livestock with water, so we'll develop systems where we'll have holding tanks, sometimes we tap into wells, a lot of times we develop springs and gravity-feed water down. And then, another big priority is the management or the removal of invasive weeds. This picture up here is Gorse. I think a lot of folks know Gorse. If you get to the north end of the county, it's obviously very present. It's also becoming pretty established down in the Brookings area. We're very committed and focused to trying to manage weeds. Obviously, eradicating them is a big goal, but we're at least trying to contain them where we can, and so currently, we're focused up in the north end of the county on Gorse, but we're about to start a project down in the Brookings area to try to manage it and eradicate it.
And quickly about our watershed education program, this year, she's been really focused on, Stacia Ryder runs that, the STEM Club and the Adopt a Stream programs, and so she's brought the STEM Club, which is, they've built ROVs and gone to take water quality. They've been really successful in what they're doing, and they've monitored some of my projects, so that's been very cool. She basically teaches riparian stewardship to these guys. Here's the ROVs I was talking about. They have brought them to special events around town to sort of show off to their parents and to their friends. That's Stacia Ryder and Kathy Bowden, they run our Education and Food Shed programs. Kathy runs the Food Shed, and so what we try to do with this program is sort of teaching kids about agriculture, your food systems, understanding where things come from, and then how it affects your watersheds, so we really try to tie that in. So this is a field trip up in Langloes where they're watching a lamb being born. It's usually the first time anybody's seen anything like that, including most of the adults there. They do field trips to the port in Port Orford to try and connect with fishermen and learn about their fishing industry and sort of the people that define their communities. And then they also have been heavily involved with school gardens this year, so they're really trying to connect the school cafeteria in with the school gardens to get food that they're growing onto their plates. And so this was one event they threw where they were able to, the students hosted and provided all food that they had- and provided all food that they had prepared and grown for their parents, their friends, their neighbors, and it kind of gives them hand-on experience. So, this was a really good partnership with our school district to bring educational resources into the community.
So, one of the big efforts that we've taken on last year, year and a half, is to develop a, what's called a focused investment partnership. Our particular partnership, we're calling it the Siskiyou Coast Estuaries. We're on the Siskiyou Coast essentially because of the Siskiyou Mountains and geology. And collectively, the two Watershed Councils and the Soil and Water Conservation District go by the name Curry Watersheds Partnership, which is CWP. For this particular endeavor, we're partnering with the Wild Rivers Land Trust, as well as the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. And the goal here is to identify one or two estuaries where we hope to receive funds, primarily through the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, to focus over like a five to ten-year period on the restoration enhancement of estuary habitat, which is generally the limiting factor to fish production on the south coast, salmon, steelhead, trout, and non-game species. So, this is kind of a long-term plan and one that we hope to carry out over the next five to ten years. Another sort of strategic endeavor that we've taken on is a Coho business plan. This is kind of a new effort that is coast-wide, and the idea is to develop what they call strategic action plans for all of these coastal streams. And eventually, the intent is for the state and the federal government to kind of pool all those together and be able to go compete with large national sources of money, like the kind of money that goes to the Florida Everglades and the Chesapeake Bay and the Great Lakes and whatnot. And so, Oregon wants to be able to compete in that kind of an arena, and they concluded that by pooling together all of these coastal systems into a proposal, they might be able to do that. And the first step to that is to develop an action plan for each of these coastal basins. And the elk was chosen as one of the initial ones. The land trust was a big proponent in that. And so, we're currently in the process of starting to implement some of that work, and we'll be working on the elk probably over the next five to ten years. And then finally, just looking forward towards the future, towards the next year and thereafter, we're essentially still involved in the same kind of things that we just promoted or talked about today. The one addition might be some work with regard to the Chetco Bar Fire. We've set on an advisory council to the governor, and we may play a role in helping to address some of the degradation on private lands down there as it relates to sedimentation and stream channel degradation and whatnot, so.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate your work.
Quick question.
One quick question.
The Scotsman, we dig that up by roots?
We do, we take the weed branch and dig it all the way up, or the RTV, and yank it out. It's the only way to get it.
Also, a guy named Matt Timchak reminded me, the white oak seem to be pretty resistant to sod, so we have our fingers crossed there, they are incredible tree, thank you very much.
That's what we thought too, thank you, Court, thank you, guys.
Okay, moving on, administrative actions and appointments, seven A. We've got the Brookings Airport Hangar Transfer Hangar, from Henderson to Schneffany. Council Huddle.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and really, I don't have much more to add that's in the packet. Henderson is selling their hangar to Schneffany, and so we need to transfer the lease.
So, do we have a motion to do so?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
I would second the motion.
Any discussion? Call for the question? Aye.
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 Okay, moving on, Hamilton Lane order to issue notice of a hearing. Council Huddle?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair, and so this is found on page, I think, sixty-seven, or actually earlier than that, of your packet. And what this is, this is a follow-up from the two visits we've received from the citizens in the area. And it starts on page fifty-seven, and it's an order directing administrator so hit to notify the offenders of a hearing on the alleged nuisance at Hamilton Lane. And I know we've had discussions about a code enforcement officer, but what this proposes is to use our existing mechanisms and ordinances to address this problem. And so, what we're looking at here, and it's summarized on page fifty-nine, is a letter that the neighbors had submitted describing the problems, and it talks about trash and human waste being dumped on the property. There are other problems on the property that we are not going to address in this code. There's been mention of traffic and things like that, people driving without a license. That's not what this is about, this is about addressing the health and safety on the property itself under a nuisance idea. And then we see where in December of 2016, we sent a notice of violation that apparently was ignored, so just simple notices of violation and hey, please, stop doing what you're doing aren't really working. And then on page sixty-two, we have a picture of the burned-out structure. On page sixty-three, there's some pictures of garbage piled up. This isn't on the screen, I apologize.
You're not missing much.
These have been submitted, I think most of the people who are here from that area have seen all this and were the ones who submitted it. More pictures of garbage piled up on the property, there's some pictures of campers taken back in 2016, which was a notice of violation. There's a picture of the garage with coolers and food bowls. Another picture of the garage with more coolers and food. So, the resolution on page sixty-eight basically starts out by reciting our ordinances, six point zero one point zero two zero and six point zero one point zero three zero, which are solid waste nuisance ordinances. And it talks about how on October eighteenth in 2017, multiple citizens came to a public meeting and described circumstances at nine seven eight five one Hamilton Lane, that a nuisance is being committed in violation of those ordinances. Those facts included that the house burned down October fifteenth, and the trash and human waste had been dumped on the property, and persons were living in garage without sanitation. And then, two months later, or three, you know, almost two months later, on December sixth, multiple citizens came for a second time to a public meeting and described circumstances that a nuisance was being committed and continued to be committed in violation of the county code. And again, the same code, six point oh one oh and oh two oh and six point oh one point oh three oh. And we had some attached photos, which I described. And then, the facts there were that since the house burned down, the sides are still standing, but the top floor collapsed on the ground floor. Susie Hamilton's living in her car on the premises. This is a quote, "Three guys and two pregnant women are living in the garage with no city water or sewer or other outside facilities to handle the waste." And so, those are, and we're showing the record that those were found in our video of December sixth at minute marker number twenty-one. And so, then, this concludes with on January third, 2017, you have determined that Hamilton Lane is in unincorporated Curry County, which is our census area of harbor and is under our jurisdiction with respect to violations of our code. In other words, this is within our power to enforce. And then, we determine that for the good of the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the county, further process is needed to determine with more certainty whether a nuisance exists, and if so, to order its abatement. So, what this order is not doing, this order is not declaring as a conclusion that there is a nuisance, but this is declaring that the board has enough information to order the county administrator to go out and investigate further, as well as direct the individuals who own and reside on the property to come to the board and explain why they don't think there's a nuisance and why we shouldn't abate it, or what they intend to do as a result. Now, what this order concludes with is that it says, "The county administrator or designee shall investigate the conditions at nine seven eight five one Hamilton Lane to determine whether Curry County ordinances are being violated." And then, number two, "The county administrator or designee shall issue notice of an order to appear and show cause why a nuisance does not exist." In other words, this is the chance for the people who are doing all this stuff to tell their side of the story. It's essentially part of what we call commonly due process. We notify them what they are accused of doing and give them an opportunity to explain themselves. We'll send the notice by regular certified US mail to the estate of Robert Hamilton, Susie Hamilton, and we won't do mail to DOZES one through X, but we will post on the property as well. So, this is, you do it by the mail and you do it by posting on the property. And then, the date and the time of the hearing, and this is proposed here, are to be February seventh, 2018, at one thirty PM. That's roughly a month from now, it's to give us time to do the investigation. The house has been posted with a no trespassing sign, so it's not likely that we can go on up and talk to anyone. And what I'm anticipating and that we'll need to do is go to the court and get a warrant before we can go out there to investigate further and walk around on private property. So, that's, there are further procedures involved in this, and this is getting the ball rolling on the official steps that the county needs to take to start, and there's more steps involved. What I wanted to check with the board was, is February seventh, 2018, and one thirty in the afternoon, an appropriate time for this? We have a few other Wednesdays, we may be able to push it up a little bit, but I think February seventeen should give all parties enough time to develop the facts necessary to have a fair hearing on this nuisance complaint. And I know it's probably not soon enough for the neighbors, but the law in these type of circumstances really gives the person who's the private property owner, you know, a lot of weight and rights in this. We want to respect those as much as we can. So, that's really my questions for the board, is the seventh an okay time? Does the board have anything to add or discuss about this, or any questions on it?
Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
I have one question on the date, but one question on the letter that was dated October eighteenth.
Yes, sir.
And, I recall certainly the people, the residents that came and spoke, no one has signed this letter, so it's referencing anonymous...
Well, certainly, Mr. Chair, now, I agree, no one has signed the letter in the packet, but I believe it was submitted on the record by neighbors, and that all we would have to do would be to go to the tape of October...
Would it help if, I'm sure they would be happy to sign, I'm just saying, would that not help versus...
Well, at this point, Mr. Chair, we don't need absolute proof. At this point, Mr. Chair, we don't need absolute proof, but what will, because all you're saying is, you know, there's good enough right now for just starting the process. Now, for you to come down ultimately after a hearing and declare that there would be a nuisance, yes, it will be important, and all the folks who are in that area will have a chance to come at that hearing and say, "That's my letter," or such and such. So, to me, the definitive time is to have that. It wouldn't hurt to have someone say, "That's my letter," or sign that letter. I don't have a copy of it today, I don't know if the people are here, so I'm not sure if I'm prepared to do that today, and I wouldn't want that to be a holdup.
I'm just bringing it up as proactive versus reactive, I'm sure they'd all be happy if just...
I...
As in, it's in its current state, it's not signed.
In its current state, it is not signed. I don't think it would be too difficult if anyone asked to go back and look at the record to find out exactly who submitted it. They may even be here today to say that was them. This is the letter of October eighteenth, 2017. And again, I remember it was delivered to us by some of the citizens, I don't know exactly which one.
Commissioner Voist, did you have a comment?
Well, this is a slow enough process, and some of these folks have already been, this is their third meeting, so I don't think we need to have any more requirements of them. And in fact, if it's going to be four and a half weeks to the seventh of February, my preference would be to see, yes, if we can possibly move it up a week. There is, there's a public safety series of factors here, so I would just try and accelerate it a little bit, it's a big question mark.
Well, my concern is that we need to give due process to both the owner of the property and those who are complaining, so it could come back and bite us if we don't give time for that due process. What are your thoughts, Council?
Well, my thoughts again are, the county will need time to gather its information, and I'm anticipating we'll actually need to go to court and get a warrant, and I can't estimate the time that it will take to get a judge to look at the paperwork and feel comfortable enough to give us a warrant to basically enter on someone's property without their permission, which again is, it's about our most strongly protected constitutional rights that exist in this country, so, you know, that's what we're asking a judge to do. I personally feel we have a very good case, and the judge should allow us, under our rights to protect the public safety, to go on there, but I don't want to predict that. But I think the evidence in the file makes the case that we have, you know, probable cause to get a warrant, and we'll be asking the county administrator to swear to that. And that will be going in front of a judge, so.
And I think that the neighbors are going to be happy that we're pushing forward on this. And I think they would understand that we can't, you know...
I think some of them are here, this isn't a public hearing, but I don't know if you're comfortable opening briefly to them for comment, but I know some of them are here, I recognize their faces. I apologize for not being able to exactly put their names to their faces. If one of them wanted to come up and say who...
Can we have some slips?
I think we have some slips.
Do we have slips on this? No, we don't.
Excuse me.
Regardless...
Is there anybody here who wanted to comment on that? Yes, we'll let one person come up.
After that, I have a comment on the date.
Why don't you comment while he's coming up?
Well, I had addressed this date with interim administrator hit earlier for meetings on the seventh, and on the fourteenth, there is a court hearing. And I see that it's still on there, and the request was not to have a meeting on those times because of this court hearing.
Yeah, so Commissioner Huxley raises a good point, Madam Chair, regarding the fundamental question of a date. Yeah, I was kind of conflicted between the desire to make it as soon as we reasonably could and gather all the necessary information, a court order or whatever, and acting as quickly as we could with the desire to have everybody here. So, I would certainly think if it's wise to postpone that, put that off to another date, in order to make sure all three commissioners are here, staff, I'm certainly fine with that. But, you know, that's really a decision with your counselor.
And you had also in the, I wasn't going to address it until item twelve, but you were listing February seventh as a general meeting also.
Right, so we could end up just postponing that general meeting a week. Or no, that's not enough, that's not enough.
You mean the hearing?
I would move it up.
I would actually recommend moving it up to the, because we have extra weeks in January, so maybe move it up one week.
That's, I think, what Commissioner Voist mentioned, the thirty-first is that we have five weeks in, five Wednesdays in January, to move it up.
We do, it's not on here, there's something else I wanted to cover, January thirty-first, but what we could do is slip. So, if you want to accelerate this to the thirty-first, I'm totally fine with that. I think that would give me more than adequate time to do the work I need to do. And then, we could have a special topic, which I'll refer to here in a few minutes on February seventh, so I'm fine with that.
Okay, we'll let...
Or later.
You introduce yourself, I recognize the face, but I can't remember the name.
I'm Jack Gresham, and I am the person who presented that letter to you several months ago. First, Commissioners, I want to thank you for giving me a couple of minutes of your time. I am here with five of my neighbors today. We appreciate that you are addressing our issues on Hamilton Lane, and we hope that you approve the proposed order that has just been discussed. And with that, if you have any questions, my neighbors and I would be happy to try and answer them for you.
Well, my only question would be, would you be willing to sign the letter so we can have that taken care of?
Yes, and I think my neighbors would too.
Okay, great.
So, what I would recommend is two amendments to the order. One, we talk about the citizen letter, I think, in this order, and I would just say that that's Jack, is it G R E S H A M, Gresham?
G R A S, and it was a letter that my neighbors and I all composed.
Okay, but we would say by, it's described as a citizen letter, we could call it Gresham Letter here. And then, that would be one change, and then we would change the date on the date to give the notice of the hearing would be January thirty-first, is that correct? Is that the, I don't have my calendar in...
Correct.
In front of me?
That's correct.
Okay. So, those would be the two changes to the order that I'd recommend. And we can, in the meantime, print for Mr. Gresham and have him and his neighbors sign the letter as well.
Okay, good. Do we have a motion to that effect, to approve the resolution?
With amendment, so moved, Madam Chair.
Do we have a second?
I would second the motion.
Any discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much for your patience.
Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. The appointment of someone to the Fair Board. We've got four applications. Do we have any comments about those four applications? I think they're all good applications.
Absolutely. That's the toughest part of this job, I think.
Well, can I say something? Presently, I don't think we have anybody from the South Curry County representing the Fair Board. And Jerry Thompson is from South Curry County, and she's also on the Tallawood-Dene Council, tribal council. So I think she could offer some really good help to the fair. And in looking at the other applications, you know, they're all very qualified, but I, Robert Shibanti kind of stood out to me. So those two, I'm proposing. Does anybody else have any?
On, on the basis of spelling Jerry's name correctly with a J, Jerry Lynn, I'll make that motion for those, for those two Fair Board, Fair Board appointments.
Do we have a second?
I will second it.
Any discussion? Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations to the new Fair Board members, and thank you all for applying. I mean, that's, that's a big job, so thank you so much. Okay, we do not have a public hearing, no old business. And next on the discussion is, let's see, road department employees' step increases. So John Hitt, do you want to talk to us about that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners. You have before you four proposed board orders, recommended by Doug Robbins, as well as the new Roadmaster, which was just coming on, on staff here in the last few weeks. For four employees, step increases. And the, the amount of the step increase varies a little bit, but the four that are proposed are Don Hannan, Edward Allen, Stephanie Herzog, and Kimberly Alexander. So the effective date of those step increases is different because the Roadmaster has proposed that they be effective on the date of their anniversary, i.e. their, the date that they were initially hired. Part of the rationale behind this is that in the SEIU contract agreement that was entered into this summer, it said effective July 1st, 2001, each employee eligible for a step will receive two half-steps, one step, and no further steps will be awarded during FY 2017, 2018. So the proposal here would level out or make equal the road department, which is not part of a union-represented group, with the other employees who are represented by the SEIU. So for those reasons, the Roadmaster and myself both recommend your approval of those step increases.
Let me just make one comment. I did a little bit of research, and the total cost of the raises would be $5,581.01. That was in the, the thing. But the savings that we're making on the new Roadmaster is $17,544. So those raises could be taken care of.
Yeah, that, that works out to $100 a month per employee. Pretty close. And it's not a pay raise, it's a catch-up.
Effectively, it's a catch-up. That's correct, Mr. Commissioner, yes.
So do we have a motion to approve the step increases?
I've motioned to approve the step increases as discussed on agenda item 10.
And a second?
Madam Chair, I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, call for the question.
Aye.
Aye. So motion passes. Okay, moving on. We've got a resolution to the, a letter to the Oregon Department of Parks and Recreation for temporary beach restrictions due to the 2018 western snowy plover nesting season. Counsel huddle.
Oh, thanks, Madam Chair. And so on this item, we have an ongoing, what we call it a joint management agreement, intergovernmental agreement, with the U.S. Bureau of Land Management, as well as the Oregon Department of Parks and Recreation. And what we're doing in this is writing a letter under that agreement to the Oregon Department of Parks and Recreation recommending access conditions on the dry sands area where the snowy plovers are nesting around the area of, it's really around the area of Floris Lake in the dunes. And then in this, it gives a justification that the observations from the BLM observer that we've had active snowy plover nesting in the area, and that justifies asking for the restriction limitations during the times asked in the letter. And that's really all I have for the board on this. This is something we do on a regular basis annually.
And I just have one question. How would that affect the Boy'scope Park revenues? Or do you have any idea? Would it affect it at all, or?
I, I don't think it has affected it. We haven't ever studied it, but this has been in place for, you know, as long, as long as I've been here. And then my understanding is the Boy'scope revenues have been doing just fine, so.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think there's a correlation, really. I don't even know if they're related, so.
Okay. My only question, yes.
I think people, because it has been several years, people are just becoming quite accustomed in the dry sand. There is an issue with the private property owners' access to, to the ocean. But I think the, the Parks Department, Oregon State Parks Department is doing everything they can to, to manage that and mitigate that.
Good. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So move, Madam Chair.
A second?
A second to motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Curry County Board of Commissioners' resolution declaring no confidence for the U.S. Forest Management and wildfire risk. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chaco Bar Fire is, is, has made a tremendous hit on our counties. You know, it's been about a fifth of the total acreage. I've helped find, put together a group that I'm very thankful for, that really wants to do everything possible to prevent another fire. With the various degrees of burns that we've had, as you know, there is, there are a lot of dead trees in acreage, and so we're really keeping an eye out for the future and what that might mean. I've been, I've been accused of really opening up to massive logging and that I've used this as an opportunity to almost be some sort of an anarchist or some, or something like that, anti-government. And the Forest Service has gone 0 for 3 on the Chaco Bar, the Silver, and the, of course, the Biscuit Fire. And the 1.8 million acres within the Rogue Siski National Forest, half of it's been burned the last 15 years. And I've got some pictures, if you want to put them up, John. And this won't take very long, Madam Chair, but.
Four minutes.
Four minutes. We've got four minutes remaining. I can handle that. Do you have them on the computer? Do you have to do them on the gizmo? So while he's working on that, since the 90s, thank you, John. Since the 90s, the amount of acreage lost in Oregon, and I think it's even a higher rate for, for Curry County, but it's four times what it was in the 90s. This is the start of the fire. You can see it is very rugged terrain. It, we had helicopters standing by. I challenged the local district ranger to hit that on the day five, when it was still under 100 acres, with absolutely everything they had. And she had full authority, and that's been confirmed. When the fire was about 100 acres, because of the terrain, they decided to set up, and this has been confirmed, a six-mile distance from each side of the fire. So that leads many people to believe that they were going to let it burn. No chainsaws. The river's at the bottom in the shadow part of the picture there. And it, when it was that small, not hitting with those helicopters, again, that were available. And then you know what happened as it moved towards Brookings. The concern we have is that we, again, we'll be looking at this down the road. Could be next year, could be 10 years from now. But it's stealing our kids' future. It is, it is incredible, the amount of wildlife that was absolutely incinerated. And we have to make a stand. And so that's this resolution that if, if I had it to do over again, I would have been on about the 14th, 15th, 16th, when I didn't get action on the, on that part of the fire at that, at that, at the level it was then, I would, I would absolutely call the Oregon Department of Forestry, and I could even be liable for not doing it right then, to get involved in this fire. And again, because it's wilderness area, the rules are different. I know people believe that the Forest Service doesn't have a let it burn policy, but there are radical environmentalists that forced that policy on the Forest Service, and that's well documented. So as it takes our backyard, where am I going, John?
You might just be able to click.
Just click?
Okay. The mouse wheel. So if that mouse has a wheel, can you roll them?
Oh, thank you.
There you go.
So this part of the Chaco Bar Fire, we just squandered 15, 16 years since 2000, well, it was 16 years anyway, reburned. So the little bit of healing that took place, you see, we lost that. And about half of the 191,000 acres was within the wilderness area, mostly in the Calmyopsis. Everything gone. I led four different tours up to this area, and it is absolutely heartbreaking, the amount of trees that we'll never be able to salvage, even if we had five years and half the loggers available and companies within Oregon. But it just goes as, as far as you can see. Same thing here, including these ridges. This is kind of looking northeast. The house, gone. Saved a little bit of timber here from the Worleton property. And these folks didn't so much even get a card of condolence from the folks that lost their home from the Forest Service. If that's interpreted as an anti-Forest Service, the Forest Service people that I know, especially here locally, they want to go, they want to grow big, beautiful trees and wonderful forests. They know this is wrong. That might be the last one. I think it is. So thank you, Madam Chair. I may have comments afterwards. I know we have some folks who would like to, to speak on this resolution.
Okay, we've got quite a list here. So if you could come up, I'll call you one at a time. And Shremier? Came close.
Yes. My name is Anne Schmier. I'm the executive director of the Wild Rivers Land Trust in Port Orford. As I looked at this resolution, I was concerned that this looked like an absolutely, you know, stopgap, end-of-the-line measure that didn't fully explore all of the options that could be brought to bear on the issue of fire control in our, in our county. Particularly, I'm concerned that there are options that haven't been explored. And I'll distribute a, a copy of a recent publication, how other threatened communities deal with that type of problem in their jurisdiction. And it all hinges on cooperation between a number of different groups. And I feel that cutting off cooperation between the groups will dramatically hamper any progress and solutions that could be brought to bear. Specifically, there's, the city of Ashland has a, what appears to me to be a very good model that's being adopted by Flagstaff and Santa Fe and other western cities that are threatened by the same types of issues that, that Brookings is, is threatened by as well. Probably even more so because they're further south. So I would like to propose that this resolution not be adopted, but further exploration of top possible partnerships, other solutions that could be brought to bear that would leverage federal investment, but bring a solution that will actually work for our community and our, our county. So I'd like to distribute this, keep my remarks short, and have you review this. I've got additional copies for others. But I'll just provide this. It's a partnership between the Lumicotsie Forest Restoration Group and the Nature Conservancy and the Forest Service and the city of Ashland.
Thank you.
And this is a model that's being proposed, as I said, by, used by other communities that leverages the federal investment, but provides solutions that actually work. Train people, provide jobs, forest restoration jobs and, and management jobs that we desperately need, so.
Thank you. Good timing. Tim Palmer?
Hi, I'm Tim Palmer from Port Orford. I'm representing the Calmyopsis Audubon Society of 300 members in our county. The proposed resolution calls for the firing of Forest Service personnel and for county action, quote, "through all available means to block other organizations from partnering with the Forest Service." The resolution is misinformed about critical facts. It's inappropriate for county government. The results would be both ineffective and illegal. Let's look at those problems one by one. The resolution is misinformed because the primary cause of recent fires' size was not Forest Service policy or personnel, but rather drought, high wind, and, high wind and high temperatures. And I have more detail on that analysis here in my written statement, but I'm going to move on. The commissioners and others may have legitimate issues with the way the fire was handled, but those would be better addressed by other means. The resolution's inappropriate because federal staffing is not a county responsibility. You three public servants have enough to do managing county staff. Please stick to your real jobs. The resolution would be ineffective because it would backfire. Consider this. If I wanted to persuade the county commissioners to do something, it would not be wise to start by launching a campaign for their recall. The resolution's illegal, or at least wrong, because the county commissioners cannot block the, quote, "ability of organizations" from performing services as a partnering group. In the United States, no government has the ability to ban citizen organizational or agency activities in this way. And this overreach of government power right here in Curry County is a bit disturbing, to say the least. Consider the groups that have partnered with the U.S. Forest Service to great benefit of our communities. The Wild Rivers Coast or Curry County Forest Collaborative, the South Coast Watershed Council, Lower Rogue Watershed Council, Resource Advisory Committee, the RAC, with all the organizations that they have funded, including the Trash Dogs, the Siski Mountain Club, and others. Consider the partnership work of the Kooz Forest Protective Association, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Natural Resources Conservation Service, and other federal agencies. Not to mention the County Sheriff's Department and county government itself, which receive Forest Service revenues as in lieu of tax payments and from timber sales on national forest land. And in some cases, shares road maintenance and responsibilities. Some of the work done by these partnering groups is aimed to reduce wildfire risk. Shooting yourself in the foot is the phrase that comes to mind here. I can't help but wonder if county counsel has advised the commissioners regarding this resolution. Surely he should, in the interest of preventing the commissioners from engaging in illegal or at least counterproductive activity. I'd like to offer a few comments here in a positive vein, if I have time. I'd like to offer a few comments here in a positive vein, if I have time. The first-
We need to wind up here.
Okay, for the, much can be done here. I would recommend, first, you take initiative where the county actually has legal responsibilities. The three, these three areas include land use planning, codes, and zoning. And in my written statement, I've itemized what that work might be. If I'd be given extra time, I could talk about that now for a minute. Otherwise, I'll move on to-
We'll give you one minute.
Okay. Professional fire analysts, who have more experience than any of us, report that the most important factor in avoiding loss of property and life is for landowners to manage their own surroundings to minimize fire danger and to fireproof their structures. It's true that intense fires can engulf houses that have taken protective measures, but proactive private management has been proven to save many structures and to be the most effective action possible and the biggest bang for the buck. This also cuts risks to firefighter safety, prevents damage to neighboring structures, and reduces the money that taxpayers now spend. Sensible private land management measures for minimizing fire loss can be incorporated into county codes. Additional county initiatives could improve preparedness. The county's responsible for hazard area zoning that can reduce risks and losses. As a minimum, home builders in areas vulnerable to wildfire can be warned of the risk and the possible inability of public agencies to protect new investments, especially in remote areas.
Okay, we're going to have to wind up now.
To summarize, please take positive steps that are within your purview, that are within your responsibilities, and spare us all the, from facing the counterproductive results that this resolution would bring to our county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer, thank you very much. The partnering groups that you identified, not one of those groups, and to the contrary, would be responsible for doing harm to the citizens of this county. We're talking about radical environmental groups here that have got us in this situation. Okay. None of those groups have harmed the people of this county. I'm reading the last one. You want me to read it?
Okay.
Curry County Board of Commissioners will seek remedies through all available means to block the ability of organizations, including but not limited to those with no fiduciary duty to the residents of the county from performing services as a partnering group with a federal agency that has the potential to do further harm or otherwise negatively impact the citizens of Curry County. That's the last paragraph of this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Cam Lynn.
Chairman Gold, Commissioner Huxley, Commissioner Boyce. I basically support or agree with this no-confidence resolution that has been presented here. While some would say that what is past is past, I would emphasize the danger of future threats. There is no indication to this point whatsoever of any substantial actions on the part of the U.S. Forest Service that lessen the risk of another fire, such as the Chetco Bar Fire. The Chetco Bar Fire was brought to us in Curry County due to the ignorance of the U.S. Forest Service, or those working for them, or it was brought to us in Curry County due to the willful disregard for the property and lives of those of us in Curry County. This same disregard for the citizens of Curry County has shown up in their after-action report that has resulted in part in public lands being closed to the public, apart from any rational scientific justification. During the fire itself, and now in the aftermath, the U.S. Forest Service has demonstrated, without any doubt, that they function, at least in Curry County, in an unreal or a fantasy And this is part of the reason that I basically support this no-confidence resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Barbas.
Excuse me. Thank you, Jan Barbas, Curry County. I agree, the Chetco Bar Fire has been devastating to Curry County. It continues to impact our economy. In fact, I was approached by somebody just last night who needed assistance. And there's plenty of room for improvement to be made. I cannot support this resolution, and primarily because I don't understand the last clause and I feel it needs significant further investigation and work. I don't know. This seems to be incredibly broad. The county is going to work to block people from working with those with no fiduciary duty. I just don't even know what this means. You can't partner with any federal agency if you don't owe Curry County a fiduciary duty? Is that what this means? Who is that? What is that? Does the county have this power? I just think this is way overreaching and ill-considered. I disagree with a number of the whereas clauses, but I won't waste your time on that. I just ask that this undergo considerable further study before and revision before the board would take action on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I didn't get, all I have here named, Curry Watershed's Partnership.
That's us. We're a confusing bunch.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's the Curry Watershed's Partnership. And again, my name was Kelly Timchak, but I'm speaking on behalf of the Lower Road Watershed Council, the South Coast Watershed Council, and the Curry County Soil and Water Conservation District. So that's what we are together. And our concern also is with the last piece, the last clause in that statement as well. And so we just have a statement here. In considering this resolution, we wanted to inform you of the impacts of the decision that you may not have previously considered. The Curry Watershed's Partnership does work with a wide range of federal agencies, and we use these partnerships to better leverage resources, technical assistance, and funding that leads to our on-the-ground restoration efforts. It leads to salmon restoration, flood management, streambank stabilization, agricultural and timber production, improved water quality, noxious weed eradication, garbage abatement, and student education. So these are several things we work with all of many federal partners to bring to the county. Specific benefits of working with Forest Service as a partner has been developing a breach management plan for New River, kind of dealing with pasture flooding and enhancing habitat. They're funding part of the STEM Club, which is bringing education to Curry County and increasing our state standards, being able to meet those for science education, the Rogue River cleanup we mentioned. So basically, we just believe that our federal partnerships demonstrate how the differing levels of government, nonprofit sectors, and the public can work together to effectively and efficiently improve the land, water, and the communities of Curry County. And so if this resolution passes, we are just a little bit concerned that it may impede our work and detract from the natural resources and the economic well-being of the South Coast in general. And so with that, we would just ask that you strongly reconsider your motion to pass this resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Dave from Hunter Creek. You might give us your last name, too.
Sure. Dave Lacy, Hunter Creek. Thank you for this opportunity to give public comment. I just wanted to encourage you guys not to go for this resolution. I just think it's not a good idea, and I wanted to address just a few things real quick. Part of the problem with the firefighting with Forest Service is half of their budget is taken to fight the fire, where it used to be their budget was used for preventing, you know, thinning some, backburning, doing things that might actually help us in the future. So I think if you guys want to spend some time working on this issue, I would go for less controversial things, working with the Forest Service, firefighters to find a new way to fund the firefighting instead of taking from the general budget of the Forest Service. I also think there's some opinion in here, not necessarily fact. I did believe the Forest, the firefighters, the initial response guys, when they talked about how dangerous that situation was in that first picture. I do not believe they have a let it burn policy. I think that they don't want to lose any more firefighters to dangerous situations when they're in there trying to start, stop the fire. Also, I think there's some opinion, when you're talking about the negligence of the Forest Service workers and the firefighters, I just believe that that fire, at a certain point, when it was wind-driven, there's no way we're going to stop that. We couldn't possibly have stopped that fire at that point. Also, in the last, be it further resolved, my business works with the Forest Service for access to the public waterways. This thing's very ill-conceived. Also, the organization I work with, Oregon Coast Visitors Association, has a strategic advisory committee that has the Forest Service in it, as well as all these other federal agencies, and we want to continue to partner with them. There's also a new outfit called the Oregon Outdoors Coalition that will bring conservation, outdoor recreation businesses, and federal agencies together to look at improving outdoor recreation opportunities throughout the state of Oregon. This would impede that down here. I'd just like to make a few suggestions. It seems like some of this issues with the Forest Service comes down to financial issues. We do not get the SRS payments anymore, is that correct? Maybe we should work on getting those. Let's try and, I don't think the citizens of Curry County would be against that. Let's work on getting our SRS payments back. Let's also look at how much money Big Timber does not pay into our coffers. They pay $2 an acre for their second-largest landowner in this county. I pay over $200 an acre. Let's try and get some more money from the Big Timber companies. Also, maybe we should consider a sales tax, as this county and this state is becoming more of a tourism destination. Let's try and get some of the money from the tourists who already pay sales tax everywhere else they go. Just some suggestions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve Bearlin? And I don't know whether I said that right, because I can't read that second one.
It's Steve Bearlin.
Came close.
Thank you, Commissioners. I think Commissioner Boyce's petition here is, a lot of people are testifying, are missing the point a little bit, and maybe it does need to be looked at a little bit more, you know, and addressed, you know, but I support the concept. I'm a third-generation Curry County resident. The, I've seen these fires. I was president of the Oregon Guides and Packers, and I've been in the guide, in fishing business, or have been, I'm retired now, for a long time. And one of the issues that we had as guides was that they would run a Forest Service supervisor in who has total control over what happens, you know, until the fire gets so large, until they bring in a team in, you know. So when this fire was young and new, we had a Forest Service supervisor that had no clue, had to learn on the job. And she chose to save the salamanders and the snails rather than saving the forest and the threat to the residents of Curry County. Every five to seven years, they run in a new Forest Service supervisor. They don't want them to be here too long. And you mark my words, and you can go back the last 30 years and see that, you know. And we had the problem in the guiding industry that we had to re-trade the forester every time a new one came in, as to, you know, what we did, what kind of services we supplied, and how we were a benefit to the national forest system, you know. So you folks, as county commissioners, are the line of experience. You are the people that know the forest and have seen the problems. You are responsible for the safety of the people of this county. And so if you don't take a role, I think you're dodging your job, you know. And I have confidence you will do the best thing, you know. But have to understand the limitations on the Forest Service. Those limitations aren't the same on you, you know. And you need to have a place at the head of the table on this. This fire could have been put out easily or controlled easily. You had three helicopters, the Scorsese Sky Crane sitting underground in Medford, dumped 23 gallons, 1,000 gallons of water per load. They could have easily have doused that fire at a quarter of an acre. She chose not to do that, Tina Lanier, the forester, because she was afraid that it would harm the invertments on the ground, that they burn them up, and a lot more of the county. But this kind of behavior has to stop. And Tina's a nice person, and, but in my talks with her, she was clueless, and she did learn, and she wished she had have known what she knows now, then, you know. And it could be chalked up to mistakes, not anything that was malicious. But you folks need to be our line and be able to help control these situations. And it's not about shutting people out like Watershed Councils and, you know, so on, you know. It's about saving our county, protecting our citizens. And I spent 47 years on doing conservation work, and I actually, you won't believe me, but I actually wrote the bill for the Watershed Health Program, got it through the House and established it. But I have leanings both ways, as all of us do. But the number-one thing that is your responsibility is keeping this county safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Lynn Thompson.
Jerry Lynn Thompson from the Kate Ranch. I am the Kate that burnt. Can you go back to that picture court? Back up the one with Cecilia's house in it? This is Cecilia Worleton's house here. This prairie right here is mine. Our house is right underneath the dock. This is my grandson's history. We've been there for 140 years. I have a cemetery on the property of my grandma, who was, great-grandma, who was born in 1857, who is buried there. We've been there for a long time. We went back there because our family, her family, had the village nearby. We stayed. We fought the fire. We used water on the fire. Water does work, contrary to popular belief. It saved my daughter's house. This road right here, this is going up to Worleton. This is Kate Road. Right back up here a little ways, going through our pictures, we found four water tankers sitting there Saturday morning, Sunday morning, full of water, within view of nine properties right there, full of water, while other Forest Service persons, well, Forest contractors were going down the road to the river. This is the South Fork. This is where South Fork comes in. This is the Chetco River. Not one drop of water. If you can see, there's a lot of defensible space around Cecilia's house. As with all of us, we've lived out there for years. We know that we got to protect ourselves. We know we have to take care of ourselves. Our families have fought fires for years. They've never been, you know, this mega-fire is not, every 15 years. The Biscuit Fire's out there. We went through that. The Silver Fire. Every 15 years, no. Right over here is Tiny and Doreen's house. Tiny and Doreen's house had a green ribbon on it because it was defensible. That meant people could protect that house. My daughter's house had a green ribbon on it. It was protectable. You could come and fight, you could defend that house. But you know what? Those people left before noon. My last picture of our property was at 3:43, I think. I come out, the road, all of us left at 3:54. She was gone. There wasn't a soul in sight. We get down to the bottom of the hill, down at the bottom of where the upper Chetco School is, there must have been 100 of them lined up there, just sitting there, not a one of them out there fighting a fire. So I realize you might think that this proposal is wrong, but we lived it. We were there. We seen the winds. The bear report come out with 10 to 15 mile an hour winds with 25 mile an hour gusts. I'm sorry, the wind thing is not working because we were there. We lived this, you guys. It's, it's easy, if you don't live there, to not understand what happened, but it was, like I say, this is my legacy for my grandkids now, is to repair this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
I guess in looking this over, I'm thinking, is there a way that we could work with the Forest Service to come up with a policy that more fits our area? There's a one-size-fits-all policy for all the forests in the United States, and not every forest is the same. And I would hate to cut them off and say, you're out of here, without trying to work with them. I think it's more important that we work with them to come up with a policy that would help the area. That's my feelings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not suggesting that we don't work with the Forest Service and all involved. What we have to do is, as one of the people mentioned testified, is we have to understand our responsibility. And I was a little slow at the switch in being in the sheriff's office with the district ranger, and as I said, if I had it to do over again- ranger, and as I said, if I had it to do over again, the state of Oregon has a tremendous record putting out fires. And there are facts that go with this that will be coming to light, and it's not based on opinion. The six-mile radius on each side demonstrates to me that there is no intention to put that fire out. If you just take that one fact and put it on the front line and say, okay, here it is, why? Helicopters, I just keep mentioning. So, and one mentioned that you can't stop that fire. Well, it could have been stopped, you have to stop July fires early, or you won't get a chance. And that's where we're at, and that's what happened. And this time, with the additional fuel load now from dead trees, it'll do the exact same thing if we don't change policies. And so this is to bring the Forest Service at the table, and we can't give them a fourth shot at not putting the fires out early.
So question, aren't they already at the table right now? We're talking about mistakes that were made.
How? They're saying they tried to put it out within 15, they initially attacked that fire within 15 minutes. I don't agree with that, and if they did, they didn't put the right people on it, and the ranger here had the final say, according to her own words, she repeated to me twice, that up to a certain acreage, up to a certain amount of funds expended, she had the authority. And yes, it was about fire, fire or safety. Nobody disputed that, and I have emails to back and support her on that. But to say that there was an aggressive action, absolutely not, to take this fire out, just, and the same thing happened two other times in Curry County, and you see the results.
Well, I think what we need to work on is policies that would be proactive, rather than reactive.
Well, I have a group that is researching this, for the, you know, with their objective is to do everything they can to prevent this from happening again. I am open to additional work on this, if there are things that, when you say that people might interpret this as we are against the Siskiyou Mountain Club or the watershed councils, that's not it. Again, I'm going to repeat, to, the opposite of those efforts hurting the citizens of our county. I don't know, I don't know anybody that really believes that. This is about policies, putting the fires out in the wilderness, getting the job done. I'd trust the state of Oregon on that, and I said that on August 23rd, said it many times privately and publicly since then.
Well, and going to the thing of discharging from public service all Forest Service personnel who are in any way responsible through negligence and bad judgment.
What would happen if we made a negligent decision? If in fact, it proves to be accurate? What would happen to us, and should happen to us? So, you know, I don't have much more to say, other than if the board wants to fine-tune this, I think that Council Huddle and Administrator Hit would be very helpful on this. I just want to send a message that we're not going to stand by and allow another mega-fire like that, and I don't believe we've seen anything yet.
You know, I would feel very comfortable in rewarding it, you know, in such a way that we're working with them to change policy that would benefit.
If you're not ready to vote today, I would support, if I understand you correctly, that that's the direction you would like to go.
And I don't, do you have any comments?
Yes.
Could we hear those comments?
Were there any other public comments, or was that?
No, that, we took care of all the public comments.
Well, they were conflicting, very conflicting comments, and again, not to get bogged down here.
You know what, I'm going to interrupt you for one second. I got an email.
I was going to include that with my response, too. Is it the one from Pig?
Reagan, yes.
Reagan, yeah. Just last night, and my response to her, I'm not going to read it, because we had a rule that we would not, if an individual was not here, we would not have a commissioner read into the record, but I did also include my response to her and her very succinct comments in my short response. There's a huge, and this is not the point of my comment here, but a huge disparity in Commissioner Boyce saying in one case, it was a matter of days before anything was really done in an attempt, and then we got back to the 15 minutes, and even if they did do something in 15 minutes, so it can't be one way or the other. I did meet at invitation of the Forest Service here, met with them to critique, you know, they wanted my opinion, here's our, what we've done, or we've attempted, what do you feel about it? We were supposed to meet about 30 minutes, this is a couple months ago, over, well over an hour later, we were still there. Very informative to me, very, I think, my comments to them. That's what, you know, working together is. I would like to include, as a supplemental item, these two pages, the email from Reagan and my response, to at least be put in as a supplemental material. I do not support this as written. You know, you're going to go bang heads with somebody, you're not going to get anything accomplished, and you're certainly, you're not going to change and start at the federal lever, level firing employees, not in anyone's lifetime here, it's not going to happen. So those are my comments.
Okay, do we have any further comments? Is there a motion to either change this, or to approve it, or where are we at this point?
Mr. Gold, Administrator Hit, everyone for that matter, how soon could we set up a workshop?
It could be included, I have proposing a workshop for next Wednesday, January 10th, and certainly could be included on that agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we pursue that avenue.
Okay, rather than talking further about this resolution?
So maybe I need to include that motion to table this?
I would just, if I may, recommend a motion to defer further action until, maybe suggest to staff, we take a review for a potential redraft, and then bring it to the January 10th workshop session for discussion.
Good, thank you. Do you need that clarified in the motion?
I would not support that. You're going to do that, and make the deadline by today to do that? Really?
Well, no, technically I have until noon tomorrow.
We can do that. Why would we, I don't want to delay this one minute more than we have to.
I would, I would support tabling this item, but I would not support anything.
Well, what about a workshop later on? Would you support that?
Did you, County Council?
Well, I was just wondering if I could, I was asked to review this, and I've heard a lot of statements about it, and again, it's a resolution, so it's a policy statement. And the first resolved is to call upon the U.S. Secretary of Agriculture to immediately discharge from public service U.S. Forest Service personnel who are in any part responsible through negligence, bad judgment or otherwise, for allowing conditions that ultimately resulted in the Cheko Bar. To me, I saw that, and again, this was presented to me by Commissioner Boyce for review, and that seemed like a request to, hey, Sonny Purdue, Secretary of Agriculture, if in your judgment, these people were responsible, it's, to me, that made it Sonny Purdue's call, and it's a request from the County Board of Commissioners, if, again, a proposed request from the County Board of Commissioners, but it's, I didn't see that as a binding statement on the part of us to have him substitute our judgment for his. The second one, and I've heard a lot of discussion here saying, we'd like to continue to work with these people, and what this does say is, the second resolved is that the County Board of Commissioners will continue to aid and cooperate with other county governments, state officials, and federal officials, to demand and contribute to structured paths to solutions that will locally address the problems and ensure the protections of its residents. And Commissioner Gold, it almost sounded like you said, we should look at a local instead of a federal, you know, one-size-fits-all policy, so that seems to incorporate that. And the third one, this seems to be the most controversial, but really, if you think of what the words say, it says, we'll seek remedies through all available means, and I've heard one speaker say that we can't constitutionally stop someone's ability to organize and talk to their public officials, and it says to block the ability. I think what that really means is to oppose, and I think we're entitled to oppose anything through legal available means, and I didn't see that as being anything illegal, so, and again, with no fiduciary duty, I think I heard Commissioner Boyce say, the two groups here who spoke and said, we're concerned about that, he responded to them and said, those type of groups who care about our streams and care about our estuaries and our resources here, would not be in that groups of people that he wrote here as no fiduciary duty, but that's subject to interpretation. I imagine that'd be taken on a case-by-case basis, given any type of a particular issue that came up, and how the issues or groups were opposed. And those would be future direction from the board, but these are policy statements, it's a resolution, it's really, I didn't see it as being anything illegal, and it's really a, it is a policy statement, it's a political matter, not necessarily legal, but really, that was kind of my legal analysis of it. So I didn't, and to say it's butting heads and being controversial, I think it's making a very strong statement, I mean, I don't want to take words out of Commissioner Boyce's mouth, but that's the sense I got from his sentiment here, and from what I've heard from some of the people who spoke, but really, again, it's a political statement, not so much a legal statement.
So Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Do we have a second? The motion dies for lack of a second.
So Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we have a workshop on July, excuse me, January 10th, and I can do the IRS, if that helps between now and noon tomorrow, to discuss further how we might amend the language that would be suitable to my board members here.
Do we have a second? I'll second that. All, any further discussion? Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, so we'll have that on a workshop, January 10th. Okay, moving on. Wild Horse Brigade, Tim Palmer, did you have something to say on that, or no? Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you had in mind, Court, by reintroducing this, I assume you want to, you said you wanted to call this up for a vote.
Yes.
Which is what you did a few weeks ago. Let me point out that when this came up, there were about 20 people here opposed to this measure, no one in favor of it, about 10 people spoke, opposed to it with very articulate responses. The, we've not heard any response to the questions that were raised then. The Commissioner Boyce did send a piece out by one William Simpson, supposedly addressing some of these issues that I think the other two commissioners got, and it was a very incomplete and inaccurate report. For one thing, he claimed that reintroducing, introducing wild horses to this area would not violate the Wild Horse and Burrow Act, because these, because working horses are allowed to find placement under that act. We're not talking about working horses here, we're talking about release of wild horses in a wild environment, a wilderness area. So his, Simpson's response really didn't help in this regard, I hope that you recognize that. I would recommend that you disapprove this motion by court, and, Court, I'm sorry, we have to disagree on everything that comes up on the agenda here, we don't in other regards, but we did here, for a number of reasons. First, there was overwhelming citizen opposition to it. Number two, the questions that were raised have not been answered, there is no reputable scientific grounding for this proposal. Court and I could argue about that, but we haven't had that argument even. The, the action would be in violation of the Wild Horse and Burrow Act and other laws, including the Wilderness Act and the Endangered Species Act. And finally, Commissioner Gold was not at the meeting where all of this testimony occurred, and I want to make sure that she is available.
Actually, I read most of the emails coming through.
Terrific, I'm glad to hear that.
I read all of them, to be honest with you.
The irony here, Court, is that your number-one criticism of the Forest Service is that they don't listen to local opinion. Well, here you have unanimous local opinion opposed to what you're recommending, and it seems that you've totally ignored it. You've come in, you know, you're just recommending it be passed in without addressing the issues whatsoever. So, you know, I just, I mean, I think this is kind of outrageous, really, to bring this up without notice, adding to the agenda item, right before the meeting, no one has warning of that, the commissioners nor any of us, and, you know, this is just not the way government should work. Please vote against this.
Yes.
Oh, thanks, Madam Chair, so there was some comments from the speaker that this is not the way government should work. Commissioner Boyce asked if this could be put on an agenda, and the response from myself and management was that, no, we have to have it taken from the table first, and that can only be done by a motion, so it was a, more or less a chicken/egg thing. Could we put on an agenda, a motion to take from the table the wild horse, then it all of a sudden becomes on an agenda? We said, you know, erring on the side of caution, let's have you bring it up to the commissioners and have them agree whether they want to talk about it again. I didn't know it would be talked about today, and maybe this was just going to be talking about the item and where it fits, and maybe talking about it a different day, but again, I think.
Well, it was kind of my understanding that they postponed it until all three commissioners were here, but.
Okay, good enough.
Maybe my understanding was incomplete.
Well, those materials aren't in the record today, but.
No, they're not.
Regardless, so I'm, again, it might make sense to partly answer the speaker's concern that this is kind of a last-minute thing. If the board wanted to, they could schedule, you know, the follow-up at a different time, in other words, remove it from the table, and then set a time to talk about it, but again, those are all board decisions, but I did want to, there were some.
So what is your suggestion that we do?
Oh, again, it's, I think Administrator Hit, whether this goes to, the wild horse goes to a work session, or whether the board wants to bring it back. You took it, you agreed to take it from the table and rediscover it, but I don't know to what extent you're prepared to rediscover it today, and so that could be part of the conversation, and again, the members of the public say they didn't get adequate notice of this item, and I think it might be a two-step process, take it from the table and then put it on an agenda, versus take it from the table, put it on an agenda, talk about it completely today, where I don't know that we're ready for that. So just some things for the board to talk about and decide, and.
Well, I don't think any horses are going to be traveling there very soon, so.
Sooner the better.
Well, I'm certainly willing to table this and, and.
If you table it, then, then it goes back into more or less a no-action land, I don't know if that's what Commissioner Boyce wants, but again, I think maybe he could speak to it a little bit.
Well, maybe re-put it on the agenda so that the public has an opportunity to speak if they want.
I would make a motion to table it.
I'll second that motion.
So, let me make sure I understand, so that, that puts it on hold indefinitely?
Until someone puts it on the agenda again.
Well, could I ask a question there? To say someone puts it on the agenda, I don't think, from an administrative point, we're going to put it on an agenda without a board vote to take it from the table, so, so we had the board vote to take it from the table today, by your second for points of discussion, but the que, so now we're going to talk about it, but now we have a motion to table it again, to not talk about it, is my understanding, and staff won't put it on an agenda without a board direction, and by tabling it, the board direction is to not put it on an agenda, if that's.
It hit a motion and a second, I believe.
Okay.
You're correct.
Yeah, so that's, but.
So it can't come back on the agenda unless it's untabled?
Right, at a board meeting, by a board vote, and that's, so that's the, that's how staff's understanding it, and Commissioner, Council, excuse me, Administrator Hit has a.
Well, let me just say, and would you, if you pass a motion to remove anything from the table, doesn't mean you have to then make a decision or talk about it at that meeting. You could say, remove it from the table and place on an agenda at a, you know, at a specific date.
At a future date.
Or whatever date, if you want to leave it to staff, whatever date staff would propose to do it. But yeah, so that's the other option, but Counselor's correct, by Robert's rules, once something's tabled, the only one that can basically remove it from the table, make it a live, actionable item, is the board itself.
I'll tell you what, I'll remove my bid here for a second. I think, I think the public should have a chance to address their concerns, if there are concerns, so.
Mr. Gold, I think you received some information I sent out that is quite scientifically-based and solid in tremendous research, otherwise I would not be promoting this. We're talking one horse for over 300 acres, Curry County is a, excuse me.
Oh, go ahead, I'm just waiting to be recognized.
This Curry County is a test area with something that you recommended in prior discussions we had, or you didn't recommend it, you said it might be of consideration, so I interpreted that, that you were at least somewhat approachable on this, this subject, and it is a tool that Curry County could use, and something that's just personally a little. And something that's just personally a little bit appalling to me is that as we try and reintroduce Native American horses to an environment, the myths can be easily debunked on, they don't do good in heavy terrain, that they're not native, that they eat the wrong things, or don't eat enough of the brush and grass that has got us in this situation because of anti-logging or anti-proper harvesting. So this is, this is a solid plan. It is, could be a tremendous thing for Curry County in a variety of ways. And my concern is, is that it will be, it will be swept under the rug and we won't get another opportunity. And the urgency here is that the horses would need to be moved here early spring. And I, yes, we need your help on this. And I challenge you to keep this possibly open.
Council Huddle?
Thanks, Commissioner Gold. There was something that Commissioner Boyce said at the beginning of his comments there, and he said that he had sent you some information. And I just want to remind the commissioners that, again, and-
Both commissioners, and it was, yes, I'm sorry.
That's, that's, well, it's essentially what we're trying to do. The public records law or the public meetings law actually requires that all of the commissioners on items that they're going to deliberate, information gathering deliberation, happen in an open meeting. And so I just want to encourage you, if you're going to correspond with your other commission members, that you do it in an open meeting. The remedy for, if there is a quote-unquote quorum, it's difficult. We only have three, so two commissioners talking about a top item, and talking can be corresponding electronically. There's some information about that in the Attorney General Manual. You just have to be very careful about sharing information, discussing deliberating, et cetera, items of county business. This item is there. So the way to do that is to disclose it in a public meeting. You disclose that you did that. So I think, you know, there, that would be a cure. But at the same time, really, when we get into these kind of conversations, they should be occurring in this forum and not through emails amongst a quorum of the county commissioners, which again, is only two. So I just want to caution you there and just make sure that we're all trying to toe the line with these rules, which are difficult with respect to the numbers that we have. If we had five commissioners, two of you could have conversations, but we just, we don't have that. So it's just a numbers thing. So that's, I just wanted to, I just want to caution you and just, I know you're passionate. I want you to keep your level of passion, but this is the forum for talking about items with the other commissioners.
Commissioner Huxley?
I have a further question of County Council on that point because both commissioners have received information from Commissioner Boyce on this subject previously via electronic emails. And the recourse, you correct me if I'm wrong, the recourse the citizens would have because this has, certainly in my opinion, been a public meetings law violation. The citizens' recourse, if this board were to pass something, would be to challenge that and have that decision overturned.
Correct. So in other words, we talked about if there's a violation by having a non-public discussion, you know, an electronic meeting, if you will. Again, this is, since the advent of email, and I know it's been years and years, the attorney generals come out with an opinion, the court cases aren't conclusive, but really there's a risk. And yes, so what can happen is, as Commissioner Huxley explained, if you make a decision, quote-unquote, "in violation of the public meetings law," then citizens can challenge that decision. So the best course of action is to do everything out here in these meetings, and that way, if anyone tries to challenge your decisions, they won't be able to rely on that part of the law for it. So just cautionary, I think, again, Commissioner Boyce, you've disclosed it here, so that's a cure under the meetings law as well. And I just, but I just want to caution you. But regardless, I don't want to sidetrack us on this side issue. I just, it was an opportunity for me to mention something that I had heard today, but I don't want to sidetrack us. We're getting back to the horse issue, and if the board is, did we set it for another meeting? Is there, we're still in the middle of that discussion.
We're in the middle of that discussion. So is there, yes.
Madam Chair, just a brief comment. I think the key here is, is this something you really want to pursue? Obviously, regardless, if it, regardless, if you choose to bring it back, whether it's like next week or six months from now, it will take and involve a certain amount of staff time to prepare that for you, as well as your own time at a future meeting. If it's something you feel, and you know, there's been quite a bit of discussion, you've seen the proposed resolution on that. If it's, if it's something you feel that you're not, just something you don't want to pursue, then I would say the best course of action is just to make a motion to not consider it further. It could always come back. You know, you can always change your mind on that at some future date. But just keep in mind, and I'm not taking a position one way or the other, whether you should or should not bring it back, but I'm just saying, if it's something you really don't feel inclined to support anyway, more discussion, more time, more commitment probably isn't going to change things very much.
Well, we've already discussed it at a workshop.
Yes, we have.
And we've had lots of emails, lots of public input. So is there a motion on the floor to just cut further discussion at this point in time?
Well, I made a motion to table. You seconded, then you withdrew your second. I did not withdraw my motion. I still have a motion on the floor to table this item versus to say that you're not going to discuss it further as-
Is there a difference between the two?
Absolutely. You could change your mind tomorrow and bring it back before the board at the next meeting. You can't do that if it's been tabled. You need the board.
Oh, you mean staff?
No. Well, and I'm saying, to say that, you said an option would be to just say you won't have a further discussion on the topic to vote for that, but that you could change your mind. Yes, you could, the commissioners could change their mind tomorrow.
Yes, okay, right.
That's not the case with the tabling of an item. It takes a majority to untable or remove something from the table. So my motion is still on the floor.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? To table it?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think your Administrator Hit brings up a good point, that if there's interest in pursuing this, yeah, let's, let's set a date. It's not going to require, in my view, a lot of additional staff time. But if we don't have that interest, then unfortunately, we, and it appears that would be, you would be the pivoting person there, the pivoting commissioner.
As always.
Your destiny.
I would say, after reading all of the emails and so forth about what horses are eating versus what they're not eating, I'm, I'm kind of against it now, to be honest with you.
I would, I would really encourage you to do a little more research because that's also a myth. And they are, they'll, they are natural arborists in eating ground fuels. And people say, how about goats? You know, they eat 30 pounds of fuel a day. And that's, that is one tool, one way that we can meet our responsibility. One way we can meet our responsibility. And the positives far outweigh any negatives, which in my view are none. So I'm going to make a motion, if I, hey, Madam Chair, that we bring this up before the end of January at another general meeting and seek additional public comment.
So do we have a second?
I have a question.
Sure.
So did, did my motion then die for lack of a second?
It died for lack of a second.
Okay, okay.
So is there a second for Commissioner Boyce's motion? That dies for lack of a second. Okay, moving on.
Point of order?
Yes.
So this item has been removed from the table. It is, in my opinion, then fair game for further board action unless it is placed back on the table or voted on. So what could happen is this could be directed to the county administrator to be talked again at a different time. Just want to, this is a, this is what I understand as being the effects of your status here.
I agree with your technical, which, that's the reason I motioned for it tabled, because it could come back at the next meeting for discussion.
So we're clear?
On the board.
The door's slightly open.
If I may, Madam Chair, Commissioners, it would not be my intent as your administrative manager to bring this back. So based on your discussion, based on the comments, it would be not my initiative to put this on a future agenda.
So do we have a motion to table it again?
Well, you don't need a motion. I'm just saying, no action's been taken. So it's, it's basically something was put on the agenda, you, as a board of commissioners, failed to take action. In my mind, that puts the ball back in the staff court. Does staff want to bring this back to you, or does staff not want to bring it back to you? And I'm telling you, my view is, I don't want to bring it back to you. Now, obviously, you, as a board, can compel me, and you have the right to do that, and-
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Huxley?
Given Administrator Hit's comments, I again would put out a motion to table the item.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Gives you an opportunity to read some more.
That's right. I can just-
And I think everybody in this room probably got that email.
Okay, so call for the question.
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion tabled. Moving on, we've got announcements. January 10th is the Board of Commissioners' workshop at 10:00 a.m. in the hearing room. January 15th, county offices are closed for Martin Luther King Day of Observance. January 17th, Board of Commissioners' General Meeting, 10:00 a.m. January 17th, Board of Commissioners' Special Meeting at 2:30 p.m. Is that the Susie Hamilton thing?
No, Madam Chair, that should be the irrigation application.
Irrigation?
It's a, yeah, here, land use appeal.
Land use. Land use appeal.
Land use appeal.
Okay, February 7th, Board of Commissioners' General Meeting, 10:00 a.m.
Administrator Hit?
Well, if I may-
I'd like comments earlier.
Yeah. What I would propose is, I would like to do a January, let's see, are you going to be here on January 24th? That'll, does that work for everybody, for a workshop?
That's fine.
Okay. I would like to, just to give you a little heads up, I would like to do a single-purpose workshop to review this county's current financial status, along with what I'm calling the 30,000-foot view of county budget options for not only the coming fiscal year, but fiscal years beyond that. And I'm making that suggestion, and I'll probably need the better part of a day, and by day, I'm saying we'll start at 10:00, and I can promise you, we'll be out of here by 4:00 with a lunch break. But my view is that we need to do some very broad view, strategic financial planning, budget planning, or in my professional opinion, we may not be here for a whole lot many more years. So we need some real serious discussions, serious major issue considerations and planning, not that you'll be making any decisions that day, or not that you would need to make any decisions in the meeting or two after that, but to give staff some direction as to how to put together a budget for next fiscal year that has that big, broad picture and plan in view. So I'd appreciate your willingness to do that. And then we already have then down January 31st, a meeting to, for the Hamilton Lane. Thank you.
Okay, great. And moving on, County Administrator Hit, I'm going to try to finish this meeting off, if that's okay with everybody? Before lunch? I know it's going to be a few minutes late.
I can be brief. And I know you like that. Loose dogs, just a general FYI kind of thing, for whatever reason, in the last three, four weeks, I've gotten several phone call complaints from county residents, primarily from the South County area. I guess, think about it, I think exclusively from the South County area, about people going out on public property with their dogs not being on, not being on leash. Some residents, I guess because of the size of the dogs or maybe their behavior, I'm not sure, feeling a little bit intimidated or threatened by that. So it's, I haven't actually looked up to see what our ordinances are regarding loose dogs. I know we don't have a animal control officer or official, so it'd be something, even if we do have on the books, it would be difficult for us to enforce, but just, that's FYI. And also to hopefully make the public aware that I think everybody feels a lot more comfortable when you're in public places if your dog is on leash. County Administrator Status, as you know, the Proffman Company agreed to continue the recruitment until January 14th. I talked to them yesterday, late yesterday afternoon. They do have three more applications. The preliminary, real quick view of those three applicants was that they didn't feel any of them was particularly strong, but they will review them more carefully, as well as, of course, hopefully get one or two more in. And then on the 17th, further opportunity to see what additional applicants may come forward, as well as consideration, your request to me and to Counsel Huddle to also bring before you a possibility of my, extending my service here for perhaps up to another year. So that, both of those would be on your agenda for the 17th. Citizens' Revenue Task Force, we also had proposed that potentially appoint those individuals. Again, that's kind of an important role, at least in my mind, again, as we particularly look long-term, where we are financially and budget-wise. We don't have any applicants so far. We had a January 8th cutoff, so hopefully, yeah, we'll get some. Hopefully, we'll get some coverage in the paper or elsewhere as to this opportunity for citizens to, again, look at the county's revenue needs long-term, what is necessary, what isn't necessary, what is feasible, what isn't feasible, those kinds of matters. But in any event, I hope you will be prepared. Hopefully, we'll get some citizen applicants, but if not, you, all three as commissioners, might be prepared to appoint one or more each of Revenue Task Force members on the 17th. And with that, I don't think I have any miscellaneous matters, unless you-
Good.
Have questions of me.
Okay, moving on, we've got Commissioner Updates. Commissioner Boyce, do you have an update?
Lots of printed information for you. All has to do, not all, but the most with the fire. Here's a good letter of support we got on maximum reasonable timber salvage from South Coast Development Council. So I'm going to pass out copies of that real quick. I'm also working with Wild Horse Force Collaborative, have a meeting tomorrow. Shouldn't make that as past, but a future, working with them and-
Do you have a, is this one page?
We're only, excuse, yes, it is just one page.
One extra copy then.
Thank you.
Did you get one?
Yeah. Thanks, got that. Thank you. So we're only, right now, that essentially is on the table, is 13,000 acres with 191,000 plus, maybe a few thousand with road hazard endanger trees. So I'm going to be presenting to the Forest Collaborative tomorrow just a proposal that there's a lot more trees that need to be harvested in, outside of the wilderness and in the matrix systems. So some of these letters will reflect that. This is November 2nd. I'll send two that way. Might be an extra one here. I'll get my counts right there. This is a letter, October 23rd, to Chairman Brass. So it's not related to the Westerman Bill, which died in the Senate. That still could come back now, we're hearing from Senator Wyden and Merkley's offices. But this just outlines the situation that Curry County is in and the devastation that this brought to us in this rural part of Oregon. And I'm almost done here. Let's see. And I have a few extra, maybe one some. And this is my letter of October 16th that had to do with the road closures, the timber salvage, compensating the private landowners. You know, it was said the day that the private landowners knew this was coming and they didn't, I mean, words to the effect of they weren't prepared enough. I don't know how, if you just want to take South Coast lumber, that they weren't prepared enough. They lost their seed program, which is enough of a heartbreak in itself, because those are trees that were indigenous specifically to southwest Oregon, in particular Curry County. So one good news, bit of news, the Forest Service has reimbursed the Sheriff's Department 75,000. 75,000 for the amount of money that was over and above their general budget that had to do with the Chaco Bar fire. So I thought that was a very good gesture, and I'm happy that the Forest Service, excuse me, that, yes, the Forest Service has and was able to reimburse the Sheriff's Office. So I'll conclude here, Madam Chair, that I have been told over and over that there's no way that Curry County is going to be able to qualify for federal disaster declaration. And I have a newspaper article here where, read a quick sentence, this is in California, the bill doesn't actually name California, although it names other disasters, tri- and states, such as Texas, Louisiana, Mississippi, and Alabama, that were hit by the hurricanes. And it gives the names of the hurricanes. This legislation, however, says relief will be provided to states affected by wildfires. I'm just going to keep beating that drum. Curry County has a story. And I am holding out a lot of hope. When you combine everything, this county has been, from the fish closures to the 101 condition, poor condition of the highway, the sod issue that we're dealing with, I'm going to be doing everything I can to work with the senators. I think that's our closest and best shot at getting the governor convinced that she needs to make this presentation to the President. And so I'll spare you additional info, but I want you to know that the list of what's happened in Curry County, what we're dealing with, is growing. And one additional add-on to that would be Surveyor Riley Smith reminds, boy, some of the things that he has lost in the fire, markers that he may not be able to find, and just one example, what that would cost to the county, what that is going to cost to the county, so.
Right, I read that this morning.
Good. And so that, just, again, that's added to the list, and that list is growing, and I've got some really quality people that are anxious to help on that. And we'll just keep applying the pressure and seeing if we can ultimately qualify. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Huxley?
I have no comments.
And I've been gone for a month with a total knee replacement, so-
Welcome back.
Yeah, welcome back, yeah.
I'm actually walking. So thank you all for coming, and I think this is a record. Amen and hallelujah.
Yeah, definitely.
Word adjourned.
Word adjourned, formally.
You didn't even need to gavel.